Okay, we'd like to get started with our debate. We want to thank all of you for coming. First of all, before we get started with the debate, we'd like to turn some time over to Alicia Alba, who will be making a statement.
Oh, you're going to hold it for me? Thanks. This is my husband, Jesse Alba, and I just wanted to read a little statement before I head out. First, I wanted to just start by thanking Jen Lyman and the central elementary administrators and everybody who helped make tonight's school board debate possible. I would also like to personally thank my campaign supporters as well as the many people who have stepped up to help me and my family over the past few weeks. About two weeks ago, I experienced a sudden and acute medical crisis. Will you just read it for me? Thanks.
I don't know if I can either. "I hoped I would recover quickly, but instead, my symptoms have persisted, and it looks like I may have a long road ahead. Consequently, I've decided to officially withdraw from this school board race. I hope that I'll be able to run again in the future, perhaps even next year in the case of a district split. As I've begun letting people know my intent to withdraw, I've had many questions about who I will now support now that I am no longer in the race. I've thought long and hard about that question. While I commend Mark Clement and Tracy McMillan for their willingness to serve, I believe a new direction is needed, and I believe Tracy's approach will follow Mark too closely and Mark's footsteps for me to support her either. On the other hand, John Gad and I share many of the same principles. He believes in local control and values input from individuals who will be impacted by decisions before they are made. He brings a fresh, data-driven, fact-based perspective that I believe will be a critical asset for our district during a time of uncertainty. I think John's learned a lot over the past few months about what this school board role entails, and I believe he has both the time and dedication to devote to doing it well. He supports teachers and wants to ensure they have what they need to excel in their classrooms. He is committed to building relationships with teachers, parents, and leaders by keeping communication channels open via email, phone, and by attending SCC and PTA meetings at the schools he would represent. John also has a track record in successfully running a business. He will be our best bet for keeping taxes low while ensuring that schools are able to thrive. I've been encouraged to see his messaging shift from one that points out problems to one that also offers positive solutions. I hope he can bring people to the table and make a difference. Overall, I believe John Gad is now the best candidate suited to serve on our school board, and I ask that you please vote for him during this election."
Thanks for reading that. Anyways, I just wanted to say thank you again to everybody. I really do appreciate it, and I wish you all the very, very best and hope that you have great success. So, thank you, thank you.
And we wish you all the best, Alicia. Thank you. Okay, my name is Jen Lyman. I am the current SEC Chair at PG High School. I also am on the PTA. I've talked with the PTA President at PG High School, and we decided to do a joint host of this debate. So, I'm grateful for that support. We had a... Our moderator had a family emergency and was not able to moderate. It was going to be John Hawkins. And so, I called my friend Tamara O'Bourn, whom I met when I was working on John's campaign years ago, and she was gracious enough to say, yes, I could do that for you. So, we're grateful for her. So, I'm going to introduce her, and then I will turn the time over to her. Tamara O'Bourn is going to be our moderator. Thank you. She graduated from BYU with a degree in political science and just recently received a master's in public administration from SUU. She was the campaign manager for John Hawkins, like I mentioned, and that's where I met her at first. Tamara is a trained prevention specialist and serves on the Board of PG Cares, our local addiction, abuse, and suicide prevention coalition here in Pleasant Grove. She currently teaches positive psychology at Pleasant Grove High School. So, I will turn the time over to her. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to read the rules, but first, we're going to have our candidates come up. We have Mark, and John, and Tracy. We'll put you in alphabetical order. Okay, Mark, and John, and Tracy, in case anyone was wondering. This is the order. So, each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute closing statement. Jen is going to be our timer. She's going to hold up her white paper when you have 15 seconds left, and then she'll make a ruckus when your time's up. There are three candidates. We want to limit your responses to about a minute. I have discretion... Someone gave me discretion. To increase that time based on complexity of the question, you'll be given the 15-second warning and a hard stop signal. There's not going to be rebuttal time issued if another candidate mentions your name. You will be able to respond in your closing statement. So, feel free to take notes and do what you need to do. But, please try to focus on what you will do in this office. If another candidate is mentioned an excessive number of times, I may choose to allow additional time during closing remarks for that candidate. We're going to try to keep this debate to an hour. We're all busy people. It's May. We all know what that means. Are you all okay? Okay, just checking. We will have some refreshments at the end. I would love to leave you some time to meet and greet our candidates and ask any follow-up questions and spend some time with them. Are you guys ready? You have two microphones, so you'll be asked to share those. Mark, we're going to start with you because you're the first in the alphabet.
Terrific. I appreciate all of you being here. And I'm the incumbent in this position, so I wanted to talk a little bit about what my positions are on education. First of all, it's interesting to see recently how we've kind of had a fracturing between our public in this valley. Some people have thought, "Well, I only want to build schools in my neighborhood. I don't want to support schools in another area." And I would just like to tell you, that's a false narrative because I am committed to education. When we build education, it supports all of us. It supports people who don't have kids in school because it makes their community stronger. My doctor may come from a kid that was educated in Saratoga Springs. Really, we need to view education as a resource as a whole, not creating a local phenomenon where we're only supporting local education. A good example of this is recent efforts to split the district. I can tell you that Alpine right now is the strongest district in the state. Its children, students, have the best test scores. It creates the best learning environment for them to go on to their university studies. And if you talk to any teacher in the state, I can tell you, they want to work in Alpine District. And so, I think that that's an important thing that I will continue to work for, is to keep the district together, to keep the benefits that our teachers currently have, and to continue to build that strong Alpine District. I just want to talk about a couple of things that I have actually voted for. Last year, we had a shortfall in special education funding. And so, there were not... There was sped funding for them, but then... I mean, there was COVID funding, but all of a sudden, that went away at the end of COVID. So, I actually voted for a tax increase to fund those special education assistance. And I think that's the kind of thing that I think is really important in our district.
Hi, friends. My name is John Gad. John T. Gad. The T stands for Thomas, but it should stand for Thrifty because that's what I'm all about. You can read more about me on my website, johnforalpine.com. But I want to talk about the three big things that kind of got me motivated to get into this rate and the things that I care about passionately. The first thing is, I feel like Alpine School District has been raising our taxes way too much. So, here's a chart that in the last six years, Alpine School District has voted to raise our taxes 10 times. 10 times in six years. That's five bonds and five rate increases. And every single time, Mark voted yes. And as I look at the budget, I see that there's tons of wasteful spending. Tons. And one of the biggest things that the school district wastes money on is extravagant school buildings. We absolutely need safe, functional school buildings, but they don't need to be crystal palaces. Another thing that the school district wastes a lot of money on is there's tons of bloated bureaucracy in the school district. Things like the DEI program, where millions of dollars are wasted pushing woke, immoral ideas on teachers and students. So, if we take all of that money that we're wasting on extravagant school buildings and bloated bureaucracy and programs that we don't need, we can take all of that money and push it where it really matters, which is great teaching because extravagant school buildings don't inspire and teach students. Great teachers do. So, let's push that money towards great teaching and make sure that teachers have all the resources that they need in their classrooms to do the very best job educating students. The base budget for Alpine School District is over $1 billion. With that $1 billion, we can easily do a great job without any more tax increases. So, I think if we focus on educating the students, focus on teaching, we can do a great job. Stop wasting so much money. Thanks.
It's going on already? Yeah. Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy McMillan. I grew up in Linden, and I graduated from Pleasant Grove. I've lived in Linden or PG nearly my entire life. I love the people in this area, and I care deeply about the kids. I am not an educator, but I am a mother of five. I have kids ranging from 16 to six years old. My oldest was born four months early, and through this experience as a young mom, it really taught me to advocate and be involved on his behalf. I've come to believe that these are really important aspects in life, that being involved in understanding issues within the district and then advocating on behalf of the people in our area is extremely important. But I also feel like that advocacy can't be accomplished without really strong communication. Communication needs to be proactive and not reactive. Parents and other stakeholders shouldn't hear about events after the fact. As a board member, some information might seem like old news because they hear it all the time. But for a lot of us, we don't. And so, that communication needs to be frequent and ongoing, and that is something that I'm committed to do. We all have our strengths and weaknesses. I don't have much experience as a public speaker, and this scares me. But while I may not be the best speaker, I am an excellent listener. Having the ability to listen is an important part of communicating. It is important to collect as much information as possible before making decisions. This allows me to look at the big picture and find ways to problem-solve. As the poet Maya Angelou said, "Do the best you can until you know better. Then, when you know better, do better." And that's what I'm committed to do.
Okay, thank you so much. I have one request for my candidates. If you use an acronym, you have to tell everybody what it means. We have a lot of those, and we don't all know what they mean. So, we want to educate while we debate, which is awesome. Okay. These questions were sourced and then surveyed and talked about in our AP Government within our AP Government History Students at PGHS. So, we've had adult eyes on them. We've had student eyes on them, which we think is really important. So, we'll start with number one. And we're going to go... I'm going to kind of switch off who goes first, if that's okay. So, Mark went first. Josh, you're going to take this one. A little Tracy, Josh. Mark?
John.
Oh, John. I'm so sorry. It's May. Okay. I really love Frozen. We're going to chalk it up to that. Okay, John. Here we go. What is your top priority? Number one, top priority, if you win? And you may have already spoke to it, but you can go a little deeper. One minute, remember.
So, my top priority is to get Alpine School District to stop raising our taxes all the time. Like I said, the base budget's over $1 billion. And with that $1 billion, we can do an awesome job educating every single student in Alpine School District. As I look at the budget, I see all kinds of room for improvement. And that's part of the problem when you have a massive local government, right? That's what the school district is. It's a local government. But it's the biggest local government. It's the biggest school district in the state of Utah. And there's a lot of bloat in that bureaucracy. There's 81 administrators at Alpine School District who make more than $200,000 a year. 55 of them make more than $211,000 a year. That's how much the governor makes. So, there's 55 people in Alpine School District who make more than our governor. There's a lot of room for improvement in stopping... We don't need to raise the taxes if we just stop the wasteful spending.
My top priority would be improved communication. As I was PTA President at Linden Elementary during the time that the district was proposing to close it down, a lot of the frustrations came from not knowing that that was even on the radar. So, I think that communication from board members and from the district is such a vital part in the district being successful.
So, my highest priority is student achievement. And it's been exciting over the last couple of years as we've had new reading programs to see the improvements in reading for our students. It turns out that you can almost predict a person's probability of going to prison by their third-grade reading scores. And so, I think that is probably the highest... My highest priority is to make sure that we get students prepared to be successful in their professions. And I think it's kind of exciting to see how that has actually made some significant improvements in the last year or so. A lot of our schools are creating goals for themselves. I really like this idea of pushing the ability to set goals and to reach goals down to individual teachers and individual teacher teams. And I think this year, they're probably going to look more at math in our elementary schools. And I think that will again have similar achievement gains.
Okay, thank you. This next question, we'll start with Tracy. This is a big topic right now, this whole idea of the district splitting. So, at this point, there are three options that are still being discussed. One is the districts staying together. One is a two-way split, and the other is a three-way split. Those are the different potentials we're still looking at. So, what are your thoughts on the district split? And which one would you choose for our district?
Okay, I think that all voters should get the chance to vote on the issue. And I think the best way for this to happen is to allow the district to put option three, the two-way split, on the ballot in November. I can see pros and cons to both staying together and for splitting. I am not in favor at all of a three-way split and don't see that it would benefit our students or our teachers. Would a three-way split potentially give us more local control and representation? Maybe for some cities, but not everyone. For Linden, it really doesn't change it at all. Being on the east side, one of my main concerns about splitting the district at all is retaining and recruiting quality teachers. There will be hard decisions, no matter what. And as a board member, I know that it would be my responsibility to foster an environment of collaboration and where we're able to move forward and create an environment where students can be successful.
Yeah, so I have been pretty open about my opinions on splitting the district. We decided to have a study. We had an external company come and do a detailed study and try to project what the cost would be, what the outcomes would be from a split. They surveyed about 10,000 parents and educators, and most of them said that they wanted to have it on the ballot. So, I have been a supporter of putting it on the ballot so people can express their opinion and see what happens. However, I am not in favor of it passing. I think we're stronger together. We, as a whole district, are able to do things like specialties in schools, language immersion programs, advanced learning models that you just can't do in a small district. So, I am in favor of having it on the ballot, but I do not think we should do a split, and I definitely am opposed to a three-way split.
So, I'm a lifelong conservative, and the principle is smaller government is better than bigger government. Smaller government is more transparent. They waste less money. They're more accountable. They're more responsive to the people. They're more nimble. They don't have this massive layer after layer of bureaucracy and red tape. So, in principle, I think smaller districts would be better. So, three is better than two because they'll be smaller. And the devil is in the details. You've got to have good leaders, and you've got to do it right. But I honestly believe that everyone, from teachers to students to staff to parents to taxpayers, everyone could be better off with a three-way split. Now, Mark talked about this study. It's rigged from start to finish. Go to my website. There's a whole article. I have all the emails. And the surveys are completely flawed. So, don't... They're biased. The bias of the school district is they don't want to split. So, be very suspicious of the data that they're putting out since that's their bias. They don't want to split. But I support a three-way split.
Okay. We are going to start with Mark this time. That's where we are, right? Okay. Thanks for keeping me honest. On that, kind of that same vein, our area has schools that are older. We know that we're an oldish area. We have some lower student counts. We've had some school closures. What are your thoughts on school closures, which relates to class sizes and fixing up older schools along with the Pleasant Grove High School remodel that has been talked about as one of the priorities for the district? That's a lot of things in one question. So, there you have it.
Okay. So, I think it's interesting that as schools decline, their services decrease. They're not able to have specialty programs. They often have split grades. A lot of negative things occurred. So, when you say, "I want to save my school," what you should be thinking is, "I want to consolidate it so it can be strong." That's the way you save schools. And so, as we've been looking at it, when a school gets down below 400 students, you're not able to have multiple teachers at each grade. So, parents have less choice on who educates their child. You also have lots of other problems that start happening. So, I'm definitely in favor of consolidating schools when they get too small. The other issues, such as seismic issues that we have at American Fork High School and Pleasant Grove, you know, I'm a big advocate for getting those repaired. And this will be the last phase for Pleasant Grove High School, and I'm really excited to see that happen.
So, I think the question was about old schools and seismic issues, right? So, my general philosophy is, just because a school is old doesn't mean you need to tear it down and build a new one. You absolutely need a safe school, and you need a functional school, and it needs to be clean and whatnot. But as long as the school is functional, keep using it forever. There's a lot of awesome traditions and history that goes into older schools. Now, as far as seismic issues, a lot of these seismic studies... A lot of what career politicians do is they try to scare us into doing what they want us to do. So, without even walking into the school building, a lot of these schools end up on these seismic... They have seismic problems lists without an engineer actually going in and inspecting it. They just drive by, and they're like, "Well, it was built in the '70s. Probably got this problem." Before we fix seismic issues, which we should absolutely fix if there are legitimate issues, I want someone who's not... Who doesn't have money to make going in there and investigating and analyzing it to make sure there really is a seismic issue. But I'm not for tearing down old schools just because they're old.
My thought on school closures is that, as a real estate agent, I understand that our population is declining. And as a board member, you have to make decisions that are hard, and sometimes that includes closing schools. I don't think that a lot of people realize that having small schools, the cost that goes into those, and that sometimes it's needed to consolidate and to close them. With Pleasant Grove High School needing remodel done, I think the best way to have that happen is for a general obligation, a GO bond, to pass. And those can also help with remodels and different things that are needed. And so, I think that hard decisions have to be made by board members, and sometimes that's closing schools. But I think there's also ways to have remodels done and to plan for the greatest capital needs.
Okay. Okay, John, you're up as the first one for this next question. Let's talk a little bit about the programs that the district offers. There's always concern about programs being moved or shut down. We have ALL, which is Advanced... Oh, my gosh. It just left my mind. Advanced Learning Lab. I'm so sorry. And then we have the dual-language immersion programs at the various schools. That's DLI, if you're keeping track of acronyms. Are you in support of these programs? Or do you feel like these are programs that shouldn't be in the district? Or what programs should be added to the district?
So, the two programs you talked about, I support. And I think that our teachers are great. They do a great job. I think different students have different needs, and I'm awesome supporting those programs. The reason this is even being talked about is because so much money is being wasted on pride things. I think school board members like to look at big fancy schools and say, "I built that." And all that money, all those millions of dollars that it costs to build that thing and then to pay for all the heat and all the cooling for the, you know, 50 years at that school, it costs more to maintain it. All that money could be pushed towards teachers and teaching resources and programs that actually benefit students, student activities, and all the great things that our teachers do to educate our students. So, I support programs that work and that make sense. And I think we should stop wasting money on bureaucracy and push that money down to those programs.
I am also supportive of those programs. I think that when students can find something that they're passionate about, that then they want to go to school. And isn't that one of our goals as a parent? We want our kids to go to school. So, whether it's programs, or the arts, or sports, or whatever, I think it's important to offer things that students want to try, want to excel at, and to give them opportunities because that will just help them become lifelong learners, and they'll have that passion moving forward. I also think that sometimes those programs need to be moved to schools, and that is another one of those hard decisions that board members have to make. Sometimes that includes moving one program from one school to another and allowing, you know, the other schools to consolidate or whatever the district needs to do. But those are hard decisions, And I think that programs should be offered, but not at the expense of other students' learning.
Okay. Sorry, Mark.
That was close. That was close. So now I've forgotten the question. Oh, yes, ALL and programs. So first of all, I think there's a little bit of a misconception. Our buildings cost less than 3% of our budget every year, paying on our bond payments for schools. Administration is less than 5% of the budget. So if you're trying to eliminate all administration and all school buildings, you're going to end up with less than 10% of the budget. Where we invest is in teachers. That's where the real learning occurs. And I really like our DLI and ALL programs. This last year, we did a comprehensive study of these programs across the district and are really looking to strengthen them. So, I mean, we have had too many of these programs, particularly in Orem. And we're going to be consolidating some of those, creating magnet schools. And I think changing those and looking for best practices will result in better specialty programs for our students.
Okay. Tracy, you're starting with this one. We're going to talk a little about your communication style. If you were voted in, who would you prioritize communicating with? And then how would you get the information to those that you represent?
I think the priority needs to be the constituents who vote you in. And I think the best way to do that is with social media and with emailing, keeping those open line of communications, and also being quick to respond. I know that sometimes I've talked to others that send out an email and then don't hear anything, or their email is just forwarded on to someone else. And they don't feel like they're getting the response that they deserve. And so being quick to reply and also putting out information as soon as I learn it or I hear about things, I think is important for those who would vote me in to get that information.
Okay, I'm now going to just confess to something. I had no idea what Instagram was until this last year. But, and so I did not do a whole lot of Instagram before the first of the year. But I'm kind of getting into it now and using that as a communication method. I take pride in answering patrons' requests within 24 hours. When I was Board President during COVID years, sometimes I would get 400 or 500 emails a week, and I would respond to all of them. And that's my commitment, is to continue to do that. I also make my cellphone number available, and I'm happy to answer texts that people might have as well because I think that's very important. The real question is how to really communicate the things that people want to hear. And I think that's something that I can probably, you know, it's still a challenge, is figuring out how to get something that they will be interested in and watch. Right now, I'm trying 30-second Instagram videos because a lot of people like something short and sweet.
So I think it's important to respond when people reach out with phone calls or texts, and I've been trying to do that, or emails. But a bigger issue of communication that I see with the school board, as it's currently constituted, is a big lack of transparency. Utah, you might not know this, passed the very first Open and Public Meetings Law in the United States. Now, all the states have some sort of open meetings law. But Alpine School District Board, the school board violates that law all the time. They're constantly doing backroom meetings with less than a quorum. They split their quorum into two, and they do two back-to-back meetings. And I have emails, they're on my website. So they decide all the stuff in backrooms, and then they show up and pretend to listen to us in a public hearing, but then they just all vote unanimously to do what they already decided to do in a backroom. So the biggest issue with communication, if I'm on the school board, is that will end because I'll expose it and will absolutely do everything out in the open as the law requires.
Okay, the next question is a little bit about conflict. The students really liked this one. If your opinion differed from not only those you represent, but also the other school board members you'll be working with, because, you know, there is multiple school board members that work together, how do you deal with those different opinions? And how do you make a decision in your specific vote on the school board? Mark, are we back to you?
So this is actually something that I'm passionate about. It turns out that no school board member has any power by themselves. They cannot influence anything by themselves. The only way you have power is if you convince a majority of the board, or four members in our case, to your particular opinion. So yeah, this is a very essential skill. And so at times, we've had people that were just critical of the district. They may have been able to stand up and say something that they didn't like, but actually they had no impact unless they could, were actually collaborative and worked together with the rest of the board to make things happen. So I think that's something that most people don't understand. Sometimes when they run for school board, they think that they're going to get on there. We had one school board member that wanted to eliminate evolution from the curriculum. And that was a fine goal for that person to have, except he didn't realize he would have to get a majority of the board to go with him before he had any influence.
So I have a different opinion than Mark on this. Obviously, you are only one vote, and there are seven school board members. So when it comes to voting, he's right. One person can only have their one vote. But there is incredible power in having the inside scoop of everything that's happening at the school board. If we finally have a school board member who doesn't vote unanimously with all the other school board members to rubber stamp what the business administrator and the superintendent want them to do in every meeting, that'll be a huge boon for the freedom of the public. Just knowing what's going on and seeing the backroom discussions and the backroom deals and the backroom emails, that school board member will have access to all of that. If you try to get access to that now with the Open Records Law grandma, their attorney for the school district will fight you tooth and nail ridiculously so that you can't have access to that information. But if we have someone on the inside who can see what's going on and have access to all that information, the one thing that scares the school board members more than anything is bad publicity. They do not want to see the things they're doing in backrooms exposed. And so that one person can do a lot to stop a lot of the mischief that goes on because they'll be able to call up the newspaper and say, "Here's what's going on, it needs to stop."
I think collaborating is an important skill to have as a board member. And also, when you're collaborating with, in the board or also with others who don't agree with you, it's important to keep an open mind, to not make up your mind before you have heard other people's opinions because when you have more information, you can make better decisions. And so I think that it's important to collaborate and to keep an open mind and to be a good listener, and then use that information to, like Mark said, you know, persuade or to share your opinion, but also to understand that there has to be some give and take within the district, that it's not just every man for themselves, but there has to be that collaboration, and that sometimes that will require some giving and sometimes that will require some taking.
Okay, a couple questions about some general policies that we know, when we're intimately involved with the schools, are being talked about. One of them is attendance. It's a real struggle nationwide. It's a huge struggle, especially since COVID. Do you have thoughts on how that works? What could be done or what can't be done? Talk about the issue with attendance in schools and how that could be addressed as a board member. John, you're first.
So I've looked into this some, and I do have an opinion. If you're going to send your kid to school, send them to school all the time. If you want your kid to be absent 20, 30, 40 days a year, don't send them to school. Homeschool them, do private school, do something. But it's super disruptive to the teacher, to constantly having to do all the makeup with kids who are constantly truant. And it's really disruptive, obviously, for that student who's missing all of that school because education builds on itself. The laws are already in place, but the principals aren't enforcing them. When a student's absent five times, they're supposed to have a meeting with the principal. And then when they're absent five more times, they're supposed to get agencies involved. And that doesn't happen. I think that principals need to do what the law says and take that burden off of teachers because it's ridiculous when they're constantly having to do makeup for kids who are missing two, three days a week routinely.
Yes, I've seen attendance an issue. And I think that one way we can address that is to uphold the consequences that come along with not attending. And I think a big part of that comes down to parental involvement and having more communication with parents and reinforcing the importance of having students in class every day, that that's where the learning takes place. I just feel like a lot of parents have, they, we're busy. We have a lot of two-family working parents. We have divorced parents. We have, and it's hard. And so it's hard to keep that communication open, but that needs to be a main focus to getting the parents on board of the importance of having their students attend school.
So I think this is a really difficult issue for teachers. And I think that they have tried a lot of innovative ways of approaching it. Sometimes we have, we've had more of our low-income parents that have had trouble. So I've seen schools that have had a pantry that if their kids got there every day that week, they got to pick things out of the pantry. I think allowing schools to actually do those kind of things on their own is really a good way of working with it. So how about a school board member? It turns out that school board members, they hire the business administrator and the superintendent. They pass the budget, they create policies, and they set general direction for the district. And they should really let schools deal with this kind of thing on their own. So as a board member, my intention is to go ahead, set some general policies, but then to let schools come up with solutions that really work well for their patrons.
Okay, this is another kind of policy issue, and it's one that's being talked about by a lot of different schools right now. And that's a cellphone policy in schools. Should it be a district-wide policy? Should it be an individual school policy? And what kind of policy would you support as a board member?
I think that we've reached a point with cellphones that it would be really hard to just have a policy that's like, no cellphones, hard stop. But I do think that the district could put policies in place, or maybe not policies in place so much as help schools and help admin to come up with ideas that work within their own schools because it's going to be different with elementary-age kids than it will be with high school kids. But there are kids in all levels who are bringing phones to school. And so those will look different within each school. So I think as a board member, working with admin and coming up with ways that can help within their own schools is the best move going forward. And I think that there does need to be some rules in place and some consequences to go along with those so that learning is what is happening at school.
Yes, so I think the legislature and the governor have really hit on this this last legislative session. By the way, I'm up there almost every day during the legislative session, talking to our legislators, trying to help them to create bills that are crafted to be best for education. I bet you there's going to be a cellphone bill this session. However, I think that really the best place to do this is at a school level. So we have junior highs where the PTAs, the community councils, and the teachers have gotten together and they said, "We don't want cellphones in our school." That has worked really well for that junior high. But if you tried to just legislate a policy for every school, I have a feeling it would backfire. I think the cellphones have become a part of our life so much that kids really need to learn how to deal with it, how to regulate themselves. And if they can work with their community and their parents to come up with a policy that will actually increase their learning, I think that's the best approach.
So if I could craft a policy for the district, I would say that the policy should give teachers unlimited latitude on what they want to do in their classroom with regard to cellphones. So I don't think a principal should be able to make the rule for the whole school. I think each individual teacher should have latitude to do what they want. I think sometimes schools, sometimes teachers encourage the kids to use tools on their phone in the learning process. That teacher needs to be able to allow those kids to do that. But there are other teachers in classes where the phone is nothing but a distraction. And that teacher needs to have, be empowered to say, "When you walk in this classroom, everybody stick your phone in the phone cubby and don't touch it until you walk back out the door." So the teachers need to have all of the power. It shouldn't be handed down on high, either from a district level or from a principal level. Each teacher, for their particular teaching environment, should have control of their classroom when it comes to cellphones so they can have no cellphones or total cellphones or something in between, whatever works for that particular teacher and that particular topic.
Okay. We are going to talk a little bit more about budget, which I know everyone's addressed a little bit, but I want to ask this specific question. And that is, have you looked over the district budget in as much detail as you can manage? And something or multiple things that you would change about the budget? And Mark, you're first on this one.
So this is, yes, I look at the budget in detail. We spend so much time looking at this. I remember when I was, my first time as a candidate, I was convinced that I was going to be able to slash that budget and find all kinds of waste. And I went after it with a vengeance. And it turns out, we run really lean. And this organization that we hired to look at the district reconfiguration actually looked at our budget too and said they could not believe we could actually do what we do with such a small amount of money per student. It turns out that we are either 49th or 50th in the nation in per pupil spending. So I have some ideas on how I would like to change the way we spend money. I would like to save up money and buy schools with cash instead of having to bond for them and pay interest. It turns out that you can save about 40% on a school if you pay for it with cash instead of bonding. And so that's probably the biggest area I'd like to improve on.
So I've heard Mark make this answer before, but here's my chart. In the last six years, the school boards voted to raise our taxes 10, or in the last six years, 10 times. And Mark voted yes all 10 times. Mark's been on the school board for 10 years. He wants four more years. That's six years longer than our hero, George Washington. When a politician says that they're going to do the exact opposite of what they've always been doing, you got to be a little bit suspicious of that. One thing that I would change is I would eliminate the DEI program, which we spend millions of dollars on, the fifth highest paid.
Wait, tell us what DEI means.
Sorry, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Program, which those words all sound great, but when you look into them, what it really is, is institutionalized racism against the majority. I have a printout from today where they give a scholarship at Alpine School Board, and they give preference to, based on your race, which is just illegal and is just wrong. Racism has always been wrong, no matter who it's against. And the fifth highest paid person at the school district is the DEI director. That person needs to be fired. And we need to completely get rid of that program day one.
So on the district website, there are two main documents that go over budget. It's the annual budget report and the annual comprehensive financial report. Both are approximately 180 pages each. I have read through both of these and have learned a lot about the district budget over the last few months. But there's still a lot that I don't fully understand in those reports. And I know that fully understanding the district's finances is something that will take time. I was talking to another board member, and they mentioned that it usually takes a new board member about a year before they kind of understand the district's finances. And so I know that it will take time, and I know that I don't have all the answers right now. So I don't know that I could give a solid answer on what I would change because I still have a lot to learn.
Okay, I have two questions left, and then you'll get to give your two-minute closing remarks. The first one, these are classic interview questions, so be ready. The first one is, what do you see as our area's greatest challenge? And what would you do to address that challenge? Greatest challenge, greatest weakness, however you want to take that. John, are you first this time? Or was it Tracy? Is it Mark? Tracy, you're up.
Okay, I think for our area, the greatest challenge is probably class sizes. And I know that some people think that by keeping smaller schools and keeping them more local, that we'll have smaller class sizes. But at Linden, I've seen throughout the last several years, that's not the case, that our class sizes are just increasing. And this leads to a lot of issues with students and teachers just feeling overwhelmed. And we're reaching points of a lot of teachers feeling burnt out. And so I think that that's one of the greatest needs in our area specifically is looking for ways to support our teachers to help with their mental health and to reduce class sizes.
So I would just like to chime in on this. That was probably my first choice too because I think that along with the best teacher in the classroom, class size is also a big predictor of student achievement. And so I'm all over that. And that was one of the times that I voted for a tax increase, was I voted for a tax increase to reduce class sizes. And so we provided extra educators to hit hotspots where all of a sudden we had one great big class and tried to make that smaller. I think the other thing that I think is, maybe the other thing that really worries me is it seems that our society is moving towards more contempt for each other and incivility in communicating with each other. And that's maybe the thing that I think is more important. I think it is in our community, but I think our kids are also feeling that. They're feeling more of that. Maybe they're getting it from their parents, but I think we need to reduce that and have more collaborative work with each other.
So I think that our biggest problem is taxes are getting raised all the time, and we have a lot of wasteful spending. Let me give you another example. When Mark started, well, we don't have records going back until 2017, but in 2017, he made a certain compensation on the board. And over the years, in the last six, seven years, he's raised that compensation by 457%. So the board voted themselves tax, pay raises, right, and benefit raises. And there really ought to be a law that politicians can't vote themselves a pay raise. Now, at the time, the newspaper said, why'd you do that? And they said, well, we're worried about future people being able to make more. We don't think that the board makes enough. Well, if that was true, they would have made the pay raise effective when somebody else gets voted in, not immediately. And they didn't. They made the pay raise effective immediately. And so those are the kind of things that I see in the budget. Those are the kind of challenges we shouldn't be voting ourselves a pay raise.
Okay, and the last question, because I'm a positive psychology teacher and politics can leave us all feeling very sad much of the time. You have one minute to tell me what you feel like some real amazing strengths are in our district and how you're going to exponentially help those increase. Yes, John, you're up. No, is it? Yep, yep, it's John. No, it's Mark. I'll never do this again.
I don't know how you kept track because I can't keep track. I would just like to tell you about the janitor at Grove Crest Elementary. He is amazing. He noticed that there was like people writing on the walls of the bathrooms and a little bit of that going on. And so what he did is he took the students that he thought were the ringleaders of this vandalism and he made them his helpers. And then he realized that a lot of these students, they just didn't know how to communicate. And so he created a writers' club where these students that were struggling in class actually wrote a book every year. I was blown away when I heard of this. We need more of that in Alpine District. We need people who take ownership of loving and caring for our kids and helping them to excel in whatever position they're in. And I'm amazed with that and I want to see more of that.
So I think the greatest thing that we have going on in our school districts is we have great teachers who care passionately about students and their success and do a great job. And my concern is that the school board gets in their way. There's all this bureaucratic layers and all this bureaucratic red tape. I think it's the school board's job to set policies and get out of the teacher's way and push resources down to teachers. Stop wasting money on stuff that teachers hate, like going to DEI trainings and being told how wicked they are because of the color of their skin. And let's let teachers thrive and let's let them teach and follow the passion of teaching those students. And so we have great teachers. And whether the district stays together as a single district or splits, those teachers are still going to have jobs. And they're still, and we're still going to do everything we can to take care of those teachers and all the staff that works at the schools. Their morale is going to go up and they're going to have all the pay and benefits that they have now or even more because those districts are going to be better managed.
I'll just echo them that I also think that something the district is doing wonderfully is hiring both their admin and their teachers. I think a lot of people get into the profession because they care about kids and they want to help foster that growth and that learning. And I just think that Alpine School District has become a place where teachers and administrators want to be. And that's because of the resources that are here, that's because of the programs that we have. And I think that that's made possible because of the strength that we have in our numbers. And an area I think that could be improved just a little bit is communication and involving parents so that we're all collaborating together, parents, teachers, admin, district, all together to help our students succeed.
Okay, two minutes each. Mark, you did have quite a bit thrown at you, so I'm going to give you 30 seconds extra to respond. We're going to go backwards this time, so we're going to go Tracy, then John, then Mark for our closing statements.
After spending time being very active in Linden Elementary's PTA, I believe that public education operates best when people are involved. The recent events regarding school closures showed me that stakeholders need choices and that we need someone to represent the Linden PGAF area who understands our schools and our issues. I have five children ranging in all levels of the schools and I have skin in the game and want to be able to be a voice, not only for my own children, but for all children and for the parents and teachers in our area. I don't know all the answers and I am learning and I am dedicated to put in the work and continue to do so. I've learned a lot over just the last few months and will continue to work, to learn and to communicate the things that I learn with the constituents who I would represent. I want to share information as I receive it so that people don't find out about things after the effects happen because that causes a lot of emotions to run high. And I believe that we need to be proactive in that communication. And I will do that by personal interactions, by utilizing social media and by being quick to respond to those who reach out to me.
So I'm just a regular guy. I've never been a politician. I don't ever really want to be a politician. But I'm running for school board because I care about the fact that our taxes are being raised way too much and I'm hoping that I can stop that. My background is as a technology attorney and also as a business owner. And I've had to make those hard decisions. I've had to cut my own pay to make sure that my employees keep their pay. I've had to make payroll every twice a month. I've had to make tough decisions on employee hiring and firing. And so running a business is my background. And Alpine School Board is the second, first or second biggest employer in Utah County. It's over a billion-dollar business. And that's the role of a school board. We need, we really need someone in there. We have a lot of people in there who have great perspectives as far as education, former teachers, a professor, PTA presidents. We need a business person in there, bad. What's going on on the school board is they're constantly just rubber stamping what the business administrator wants them to do and those are often really horrible business decisions. The school board just recently tried to pass $175 million bond to build a single high school, one building, the most expensive high school probably in the history of the state of Utah. But I caught wind of it. I went and spoke against it. I called the Utah Tax Payers Association. They wrote an article, ABC4, I think, did a thing. And lo and behold, a few days later, instead of voting to pass that $175 million bond to build one building, they pulled that off their agenda and it didn't happen. That's what we need to keep happening, right? They should build that building for 50 million or 40 million, not 175 million. There's cheaper ways to do things. There's better ways to run this massive business. And that's the school board, that's the school board's job. And then let the teachers, get out of the teacher's way. Let them do the awesome job that they do teaching students. School board members don't teach students to read, teachers do. But school board members do run that business. And it's really important that we get some business people in there to make better decisions to use our tax dollars more wisely.
So I appreciate all of you being here. This is, you should be commended for being interested in a school board race and coming out on a rainy night when you could be home in a warm couch. I would, just wanted to tell you a couple of things about me that have brought me to being a school board member. I teach computer science at Brigham Young University. I get the chance to interact with the product of Alpine District. So I get the students after they've graduated and they come into with great ambition, sometimes with skills that could use a little work. And I am so excited to work with them. So during my time on the school board, we have worked on creating opportunities for students with technology. We've increased the computer science classes and access to devices so that now students can actually gain skills that will help them to be part of this technology industry. I think that's really exciting. So I'd like to continue to do that, to continue to be that voice for technology, for having students be prepared to be successful in our world. As I've been on the school board for a few years, I have also gained a broader perspective. I actually am the president-elect for the School Board Association for the state. And as that, in that role, I visit schools and school boards throughout the state. And one thing that we've done, you might think it's hard for a school board with seven members to come to a decision. Imagine how hard it is with 41 districts and all of those school board members in 41 districts to come to consensus. Here's the consensus we've come to. When I first started, there was a lot of bickering. Should we give more money to large districts or to small districts? What we eventually decided is every kid in Utah is my kid. As a school board member, I care as much about a kid in San Juan District as I do in my own district. And what that has done, it is it allows us to strengthen students throughout the state. And so that's my mission here on the Alpine School Board is to help us realize that every kid in Alpine District is our kid and we need to take care of each other. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to give one more really big round of applause for these candidates because it is really hard to do this. It's really easy to be where you're sitting and judge them for all the words, whatever you think of their words. So give them a really big round of applause. Very brave to run for any position. You are excused to kind of maybe just get some space in the back so people can visit with you on their way out. Mark, did you have words?
I did. I think we need a round of applause for our moderator.
Oh. I haven't given them my soapbox yet, so you can't applaud me. While they're leaving, here's my soapbox. I'm going to beg you, all of you in this room, you're here because you care, right? Not very many people take the time out of their days to do this. Please talk to your neighbors. Voting is a privilege and please be civil. These candidates are brave and the things that I see working closely with candidates on campaigns in my previous life before teaching would horrify you. Don't say those things. Be kind, stand up for what you believe, vote for your candidate, share your thoughts. But our kids, our kids are learning it from the adults. So be kind and vote and get your neighbors to vote and do all those wonderful things. Okay? Have a great night.